It did. I'm good. Yep. Great. It makes more sense with my story.
That's okay.
Are you emailing?
I shared it into her camera. Ashley did a nude. That's okay. I want to share it.
Do you know that you can export it?
No, I know nothing about it.
Okay. Sure. You can put it in either PowerPoint or PDF pretty easy. I don't know how you prefer it to me. Oh, fine. You can also do it in PowerPoint. I've done that before and then put it into Google Slides. Mostly because I get nervous.
Well, it is off. I don't love it.
It is. It's not. I don't think that's a strong signal.
No.
So.
Okay, so it is.
That should work. Hi, Mr. Partey.
Do you want to say at the end?
I'm pounding.
I was going to say.
Did you get that?
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's really nice. It's really nice to have it here. I didn't know much about it.
Yeah, I heard her. Partey got a little nervous. That's what I.
Yeah. Yeah, they do.
I don't. Oh.
We like to get. And these are all.
Yeah, there's so many.
Doing something recording and letting me talk. But more. Of course, it's hard. He's part of my problem. Just kind of stand there. I have my time, but then I'm just lost. But I keep talking. But I will tell you. And I take it back every two weeks.
There you go.
Here we go. It is nice, though, I will say. It doesn't need to be put that focus on.
A little bit, huh? Yes, no, I appreciate that.
Why? This might be a good consideration.
If I set it over there, can I take the microphone?
Yeah, no, I totally.
Um, you know. Send to.
Oh.
Okay, so I can do it from there and bring my mic.
And you're speaking. Except for with the. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Set up a half hour. I'll go, Jen.
Yes.
I would have.
We're on. When I. Yeah, yeah, it's not. But that was.
I'm. I'm. All of my thinking. Especially in the student past now. Yes. Now I'm fully. Away from everything. So. It's helpful. And. Test. April, our. April, our. Yeah. Here we go. Uh, month.
They would love to see you.
Yeah, I love. I like throwing up.
I can never say anything.
Oh, really? Yeah, yeah. I sense a great universe.
No, no. She's doing this for. Um, she works with all. Yeah. So she's coming. Right.
Clearly without.
Um, she's on. Because she just ran.
Yes. I have been. Down in the. College.
Oh, yeah.
Never came home.
Yeah.
One actually worked for you to be out.
Oh, really?
And so she's this.
Oh, wow. I got hired. Or seven. No, no, I worked right through COVID. I made it through. It was pretty difficult.
Yeah.
Oh, I bet. I bet.
Oh, she's.
Yeah. Yeah, that's. Yeah, I was going to say. Oh, that's. Never lie. I got a job.
Is that okay? Because I'm going to hold this because I can't see that. No, I think this. You want to stay right here? Oh, you need to plug in. You can. Okay.
Massachusetts. And when the thing. We'd still end up. Yeah. In the.
Good evening. Welcome to the Wyndham Raymond School District Board of Directors meeting. It is Wednesday, May seventh, 2025, at six thirty PM. And we're in the Jordan Small Middle School gym. May have a roll call, please.
Jessica Bridges.
Here.
Jody Carroll.
Here.
Caitlin Downs. Marge Gavoni.
Here.
Shar Jewell.
Here.
Joe Kellner.
Here.
Grace Lovett.
Here.
Christina Small.
Here.
Jenny Woodman.
Here.
Jolene Bailey.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, there aren't any adjustments tonight.
Okay, now is the time for public input. The purpose of public input is to provide an opportunity to address the board on matters specific to our schools and educational matters. All other comments beyond that scope are not appropriate for this meeting. The board will listen carefully to all members of the public but will not respond. Speakers are expected to follow rules of common decency and decorum. Interrupting any speaker or board member during commentary is not allowed. We ask that all speakers address the board, not the audience. Each person will be permitted to address the board one time during public comment with a maximum speaking time of three minutes. Sharing time with another speaker is not permitted. I will alert the speaker at the three-minute mark. If speakers do not complete their comments within the allotted three minutes, they may submit a written statement to the board. Written statements are also accepted from those who do not wish to speak publicly. Requests for information or concerns that require further research will be noted and referred to the superintendent for further action if necessary. Discussion of matters involving individual students is not permitted during public comment due to the privacy, confidentiality, and due process rights of all RSU-14 students. Comments regarding any individual staff, either by name or specifically identifiable by position, are not permitted. Complaints about any district employee should follow the process outlined in policy KEB, Public Complaints About School Personnel, and are not permitted during public comment. We ask that all, that adults share their first and last name and the town they reside in. Students are only required to share their first name. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Let's move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have a couple items that I want to share with everyone tonight. First of all, Monday night, and I actually had a chance to see some board members there as well. Had a chance to visit the RSU-14 art show in the opening for that. Absolutely outstanding night. Great turnout from the community and just an outstanding job by our music program on putting together a couple coral pieces. Really having a nice kickoff with the arts. But want to just make sure that we recognize our art teachers across the district. What I love most about that show, and I think I shared the other night, is that it's fun to see the progression from kindergarten to all the way up to high school and some kids that are just some very, very talented artists. And then the products that kids are working on and the expression that they have. There's professional quality work that's being displayed there at Wyndham High School. But before I recognize, just also want to remind the public is that the show will be up through Friday. And anyone who would like to go see the show after the high school lets out for the day around two ten, the public is welcome to come, take a walk around and just see some of the amazing work that's there. And then beginning next week, the, many of the pieces will be taken down. Most of the high school stuff, though, will be up for the remainder of the year. But like to recognize from Wyndham High School Jeff Bell, Alyssa James, Jill McLaughlin, from Wyndham Middle School Hillary McHugh and Allison Hopkins, from Jordan Small Middle School Christina Warren, from Wyndham Primary School Catherine Giard and Jennifer Vasilakis, from Mayman Elementary School Brendan McGinnis, and from Manchester School Julie Clark. Just an outstanding display and also just a great representation of the high-quality art instruction that happens here in the district. And again, any community members who might be out there watching, it's just a great opportunity to see the work the kids do throughout the year. Thought I would just take a moment. Next week's a big night for us, for RSU-14, for our annual budget validation night. It's the opportunity for the public to come and learn a little bit about the budget and then also learn a little bit about where we have requiring or asking for money for some capital projects. And then an also opportunity for the public to work through the budget. The budget that's approved next Wednesday night is the budget that will go to the voters on June tenth. And it's actually the budget that will go to the voters for absentee ballots, I think, as of May fifteenth. So people will begin voting next week. But so, May fourteenth, six thirty, in the high school auditorium. The town clerks will be available at six o'clock to check people in to participate in the meeting. You have to be a registered voter of either Wyndham or Raymond in order to be able to do that vote. But just a couple reminders for the public. We started our budget process in late October, early November. The administrative team spent a good three solid months working on that budget. And also just want to remind the public, and it'll be part of my presentation, and actually I'm just pulling some highlights from a letter that will go to the community tomorrow. Anywhere within this budget that we looked at, looked at a new position. It was taken from an existing position, whether it be through enrollment changes or positions that were open that we then reallocated. So A Team was very, very mindful, the board was very, very mindful of what happened throughout that budget process, knowing that we have a second round of a teacher contract this year. And then also knowing that our first round of debt was going to be coming on board. So board had a chance, and all of you sat either in this room or in the Wyndham High School for six weeks straight and had a chance to listen to every cost center, all forty-five-hundred lines of the budget. I presented the budget back on February twenty-sixth, and you approved it as a board on April ninth. The budget that's going to go to the public next week is a twelve-point-seven-five percent increase, but it's also a nineteen percent increase in state subsidy. Considerable amount of state subsidy and actually half of the budget increase being covered by either additional state subsidy or by using carryover funds to support buying down the overall costs and expense. And if you look at our budget, probably the best way to explain it is three buckets. In the first bucket is our regular year-over-year expenses, which for this year was five-point-six percent. Last year's budget that was approved by the voters was five-point-nine percent. So we're actually, year-over-year, we're a little bit lower than where we were previously. And what's driving the budget increase this year is the second year of a teacher contract. And if you remember, board, back to last year, we negotiated a new contract with our teachers, and we were woefully behind in the salaries that we were paying. However, as a board, you couldn't afford to make that catch-up in one year. And so you worked with the association to do that over two years. And that second-year catch-up will get our wonderful staff to average. That's a Cumberland County average. They will not be the highest paid, they will not be the lowest paid, they will be average for the peers. And I think, as you've heard from administrators, one thing that they want to make sure is that we have outstanding staff here in the district, and we want to hold on to them. So part of that budget is that. Second portion of the budget, six percent, which is close to four million dollars on our budget, which is subsidy-supported, is for our new middle school. We settled on our first hundred-and-five-million-dollar bond yesterday at a four-point-zero-seven percent interest rate, which is actually a great place to be where we are in our economic environment. But ninety percent of that new bond is straight subsidy that will be paid to the district so that it will be money in and then it will be money out. And this very first year, we are just financing the state portion, and so really not a lot of cost to the local taxpayers for that six percent. However, expenditures go up six percent. We need to report that in our budget. And then the last bucket, which is a great bucket, the addition of fifty-nine pre-K slots in the district, which almost, almost reduces our waiting list for pre-K. But of that roughly six-hundred-thousand-dollar cost, or about a percent, about five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars is coming in additional subsidy. So a lot of great offsets. It's part of the story that I'll be sharing next week with the community. It's part of the story that will go out in this letter tomorrow for the community to know. Here's the reason why we're up so much, and here are some of those pieces that are going to be coming back to the district again as straight subsidy. So again, any registered voters in Wyndham and Raymond are welcome to come and participate in that budget meeting. We're an RSU, and we are our own municipal organization. Our budget doesn't go to a town council, our budget goes to a public forum. The public is our legislative body. And then what's approved next Wednesday night goes to the voters on June tenth. So again, a lot of work has happened by you as a board, by the administrative team, and we're looking forward to presenting that to the community next week. And the last piece is that construction is moving right along. They've poured almost two thousand yards of concrete, and through that month of, little over a month of work, have poured one-third of the front wing. So just giving an idea of scale, we're going to be continuing, or they're going to be continuing to pour concrete. I am working on right now, getting a time for the board to get out on site, to take a walk through. I think by the time you get there, A section, which is the first building, left-hand wing, will be filled in, so you get a chance to kind of walk in and get scale. B section should be partially poured by the time we can get out there. But again, an idea of see all the work that's going on and just exciting to see. And then starting next week, the building is actually going to start going up. So you'll start seeing concrete block for stairwells and for elevators. And if anyone's ever watched the construction of a hotel, often you'll see there's an elevator shaft that's there, or you'll see a stairwell that's there and nothing else around it. That's the first item that gets built. So beginning next week, we're going to start seeing things heading in that direction. That's what I have.
Did you have questions for Chris? No, okay. Next item is board roundtable. I think I saw Jess first. No, I s- yes, sorry. Please go.
Okay, I'm like, I don't have to go first if I don't have to. I just wanted to shout out for Teacher Appreciation Week, that we are very appreciative of our teachers. I feel like we're very blessed in this district. I haven't had a bad one yet for my kids, but I just wanted to say thank you for all that you guys do. It, it means a lot. And I know it's not a lot, but sometimes just being told that it means a lot is a good thing. So thank you.
Joe? Okay, sure. Jody?
I just wanted to reiterate as often as we can, thanks, Chris, for going through that process of having the three buckets. I don't know that it's really clear when I hear you speak really articulately about the finances and how we have revenue and expenses that everyone really understands. And certainly, I think it's really important that we all continue to spread the news of the increase that you're going to see on the tax rate, which is really honestly what people care about when we hear about an increase that we vote on at the polling station, is six-point-four percent. That's the effective increase for this, and we have a duty to explain it in detail. So I do appreciate you going into that level of detail for those interested parties, but it is a six-point-four percent increase, and that's important for us to continue to share in our communities as well. So that's the only thing I wanted just to drop in if people are following along with us on this one. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I also think you wanted to touch on the budget as well and my perspective, because I know there's been a lot of communication on this. I try to stay off of social media for my own well-being, but I sometimes can't help myself. And in seeing some of the conversations, I want to express actually a lot of empathy toward the people that are concerned at the price increases that are coming in both Wyndham and Raymond and, and with the school district, with the RSU, frankly. Five to six percent acknowledged does outpace inflation, and that's something that I think is important to call out there. The other side of that, though, is the things that Mr. Howell mentioned in his report out are incredibly important. And the budget that we passed as a board, I think, was very conservative, actually given the obligations that we have. One of those obligations, and it's apropos to talk about this on Teacher Appreciation Week, is making sure that we're paying our teachers appropriately. And that's contractual. That's, at this point, it is what it is and it is what it should be. The other piece is the middle school. Wherever folks fell on that or voted on that, the middle school was passed, the debt is there, it is what it is, it's inflexible. You know, the parts of the budget that, if our budget weren't passed, would need to be looked at, would truly affect the learning of students in our school districts. And I think that's important to acknowledge. While it is expensive to deliver the education, as solid as RSU-14 does it, it's also important to contextualize it, to say that our cost per pupil is nowhere near the top in the area. And we're, we're in a process of right sizing, we're in the process of right sizing from both an expense perspective and from a facilities perspective. And I think those things are really important to think about as people make their decisions as they vote. But at the same time, I do think it's important to acknowledge that, you know, there, there are comments out there, you know, around, oh, it's only two hundred dollars, it's only two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That is a lot for people, and we do need to acknowledge that, too. So. But I really strongly encourage people to vote for this budget. It's a good budget. We all pass, we all passed it unanimously, and I think we need to find ways to communicate that as a board externally. Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, we can move on to committee reports, finance.
So finance has not had a meeting, although we've been living, eating, and breathing finance for the last few months. I just want to kind of tagline on to the comments about the budget. In addition to Appreciation Week, to put out my appreciation to the administrative team at Central Office. Chris and his leadership do a great job in explaining the budget and also looking at creative ways to get funding from outside resources. So, you know, when we look at a twelve-point-whatever budget increase, but we've got revenues that offset on half of that. And it's only through the creativity and knowledge and expertise of the Central Office staff that we're able to do that for the taxpayers of Raymond and Wyndham. So while I personally wish it could be lower, of course, we all do. It's, it's a lot better than a lot of the other communities that we're neighbors to. And I really believe that it's due to the expertise and knowledge of our staff.
Facilities?
We have not met yet.
Policy?
Policy did meet. We meet every two weeks. So we met on the fifth, this past Monday. We continued our work on Title One. We were joined by Christine Hessler, Director of Curriculum, again. This one was on KBF. So we were looking at parental involvement with Title One in the district. And the Director of Curriculum, you'll remember, I noted that there are a number of exhibits that go with this policy. She had come in proactively and given us an outline similar to our strategic plan of what they were going to do as a team through our policy revision process to look at the exhibits, which, of course, are the processes related to our policy. Came back this next meeting, this is the second meeting, we had this one on our agenda, and gave us what I would consider sort of a State of the Union on what they're going to do, what they have done, and as a result of that Excel spreadsheet, what they're doing going forward. So did what I would describe as a proficient audit on the process related to and describing the exhibits for this policy. And so I really enjoyed that. And then we got a readout on, and you'll see that essentially when we bring this policy to you. So that one, we would consider finalized. So we'll bring that and the exhibits going forward. We also looked at JJIF, which is our management of concussions and other head injuries in the district. We were joined by Gail White and Carrie Jolly, nurses in the district, and our athletic trainer, Casey Sinclair. And we had a rich discussion around not just the policy, but there are seven exhibits that go through, and so you can imagine the policy requirements, just parental disclosure, authorization, and what we have to do as a district for liability, how we integrate with local doctors on behalf of our students, clearing them for sports coming back after injuries, et cetera. So we won't get into that too much. But essentially, we worked on the policy, we worked on and relied on those three key members in our district to help us understand what those exhibits are used for, and we distilled that down to what looks like it'll be an exhibit handbook that we will have facing the public going forward instead of seven working exhibits. And we'll, we'll bring that to you with the policy. So we are nearly finished our work on that one. We're going to meet again on the nineteenth of May, and we'll review district survey data regarding our cell phone policy for the district, JFCK. We'll take a good look at the first bit of survey data that we've garnered. We will also be joined by district staff member and some students that will be presenting pros and cons. pros and cons as part of an academic process that they'll benefit from and the committee will also benefit from that as well. So if you're interested in that, we'll be meeting on the 19th at 9:30 in the superintendent's conference room and we'll take a look at that and we'll continue our work on the 19th on cell phones in the district.
Curriculum?
Okay, so we don't officially meet until May 28th, but today, as you know, we're building a new middle school. And so Christine Hessler, the Director of Curriculum and Wyndham Middle School and Jordan Small Middle School have been spending a lot of time trying to get their curriculum all together on track and so it kind of all is the same. Today, they got to celebrate that because in the very short amount of time that they've been meeting together, they have pretty much got it down for sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So four board members and Christine Bertinay attended the gallery walk this afternoon at the middle school showcasing the work that they have done to date. Examples from all content areas are displayed, including unit creations at different stages. This included standards, performance indicators, links, resources, assessments and level of rigor. On display as well was academic vocabulary and student examples. Now, the middle level has a clear scope and sequence for grades six through seventh and eighth in the four core content areas of ELA, math, science and social studies. All the content areas are engaged in this work, including STEM, health, PE, music and art. So this really is a celebration of the collaborative work of these two schools to put into one across the two buildings. So, thank you very much.
Can I ask Jess if, based on the information that you just provided, if, and this might be Chris as well, the goal was for this fall, I thought, to start looking at running these in each individual building to the extent possible. That's why we're looking at it more than a year in advance. And if that wasn't totally obvious for anyone listening, then trying out new curriculum for a full year is going to garner a lot of great feedback and learning opportunities. So, thanks.
Yeah, one thing that was brought up was that a lot of the teachers were asking if they could start this next year. And of course, that was in an interest because then they can work out all the kinks and everything. But any new teachers coming in is going to be able to go to the website and look things up and know exactly what's expected of them that year for the students to learn. So, it's going to be nice.
The only thing, the one thing is that does not apply to the fifth grade for the coming year. They're going to just, they've got to start working, they've got to start working on that, getting the two groups together.
And can I just say too, that substitutes coming in are going to know exactly what they're supposed to be doing that day so they don't have to feel that they're just filling in time. They know exactly what's happening that day.
All right, let's move on to report of the secretary. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the minutes of the April 16, 2025 meeting.
Second. Board discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries. All right, item 10, Katahdin State of the School. So this is our final State of the School presentation for the year. So welcome, Rich Meserve, Katahdin Head of School.
Rich, let me, Rich, see.
Now we're sitting on? All right, thanks very much for having us here tonight. Very excited to be here. I am sure my friend to my right is very excited to be here, or petrified, so please bear with us. I did put the ask out to our students. We had three initial students want to come and speak about the program to you all, but work got in the way for two of them. But Dominic Siragusa was kind enough to come tonight. He has a few comments he'd like to make.
Hi. I'll let you know now that my speech might not be the best because I don't like talking in front of huge groups. But when I was offered the opportunity to come talk on the behalf of Katahdin, I couldn't let the opportunity go to waste. This program has helped, this program has helped me a lot. I'm a junior and before coming here, I was failing academically. I couldn't, I wasn't showing up to school. I was trouble, I was, I got expelled twice. I couldn't, I had difficulty attending and focusing in class. Now that, now that I'm finally in the Katahdin program, I've cut my absences from over 100 my sophomore year down to two this year. Before the Katahdin program, I didn't think it was going to be possible for me to get my high school diploma. But they've given me the opportunity to be able to still graduate with my class if I push myself to do it. My grades before coming to Katahdin were all failing, but now since joining the Katahdin program, my grades are all As and Bs. I might have a C. A huge part of what makes Katahdin work for a lot of people, including myself, are the experiential learning experiences. They give us so many opportunities to do good things and still make them fun. Like, we are building a boat on Macworth Island and not only is it hands-on and fun, it is also teaching us carpentry skills, using math and to make the right cuts and use the right amount of epoxy, or how to order the right amount of lumber. Not only that, we also help people out in our community. There is this elderly woman, we go to and help her out by stacking wood and bags of pellets. And it shows us that nice things for others not only make them happy, but also makes us feel good. I love the opportunities that the Katahdin program gave to not only me, but many people before me and hopefully many more students get the opportunity to come here like I did. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Grace?
Thanks, Dom. So...
Rich, do you mind Grace did have a question?
It's not a question. I just wanted to thank you very much for being here this evening and sharing that with us. I really appreciate that. It just shows the, yet another way that this district supports all students, so I really appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Sure.
So Dominic, you started out by saying that you don't speak well in front of groups. You did an excellent job. Really, really good. So be very proud of the progress you've made and hopefully, actually, we know that you're going to have a great future. And definitely reach out to anybody on the board if you need support in the future because we are here for you.
Thank you.
All right, we're good, carry on.
So I was in my office today and a student who knew about this presentation came in and brought me a note that she would like me to share. And I will not be reading this because I can't see it, but I did type it out word for word and this is what it said. Although we are a diverse group of staff and students, it is extremely easy to find someone who is welcoming and supportive. Whether it is a teacher or fellow classmates, I always know and feel like I have someone on my team and that's extremely important to me and other kids because we don't always have that at home. I feel like I have a family, which is a wonderful contrast from how I used to feel about school before Katahdin. Not only am I learning the usual school subjects, but I'm also learning things that interest me and help prepare me for the real world. I've learned how to cook nutritious meals, properly clean up after that, push through things that are difficult for me and so much more. My counselor is going to teach me to ride a bike so I can get to work because my family cannot. Staff truly goes the extra mile for each student in whatever way the child may need. Thank you Katahdin for not only saving me, but for not, saving me from not graduating, but also for putting faith and work into me when everyone else gave up. We can jump to slide three, Christine? So we have a little slideshow here with some information on it and I'll try to go through this as rapidly as I can. So, we did a, presented a survey to our students, asked them a whole bunch of questions. I've just included a few here. This particular slide and pie chart shows the answers to, coming to school is easier now that I'm at Katahdin. So 86% almost of students responded that that is the case. So, the reasons for that could be, could be many and are. We've got, you know, a later start time, we've got smaller class sizes. I could go on and on, but for the most part, that's where, that's where students, students feel about the ease of coming to school now. What's this next one? We have moved on, thank you. I will try to get back to the high school to resume regular classes at some point. Most students feel this way, not all, but most. And typically, when we have students join our program, they remain at Katahdin and graduate from Katahdin. Not everyone does, which is great, but most do. We had over 81% students, of students respond in that manner. We asked students if they felt they would be able to obtain their diploma due to being at Katahdin versus not. Do the math here, 100% of our students felt either very strongly or strongly that they would be able to earn their diploma with us at Katahdin versus remaining in the high school. Pretty, pretty strong endorsement right there, I think. And, you know, we're standing, we've got someone standing here right now who probably feels the same way, right? We've got some, how has Katahdin impacted you statements? Just kind of go through these real quickly. It's sort of a little microcosm of the rationale for why we exist and how we do what we do. So, the first one up in the corner, upper right-hand corner, it's changed my view on learning and taught me how important attendance is and that showing up matters. This is a common theme that we have. Our attendance numbers typically are much better than they were before students joined us. Being at Katahdin has impacted me by giving me more motivation in coming to school and the different type of learning that we do helps me out a lot and that we're in a class as a group instead of by myself. So our small class sizes, I think, are a big, a big part of kind of illustrating why this answer is what it is. Also, the individualized nature that we're able to do for students, that personalization piece, bringing that into the curriculum that we do. I think that's why, that's why it works. Katahdin has helped me grow as a person. I've tried things like whitewater rafting or rock climbing. I've learned interesting things about the brain and how the mind works. I'll talk a little bit more about the outdoor stuff towards the end of the presentation. And then this is the first time in years I've actually gone to school this much. Surprising how many times I hear a version of that from our students. We have a few testimonials here and I have a whole bunch that I'll be sending to the board so that you have these from both parents and students. Just some snippets from this, this is from a parent of a graduate. There is no way I can describe the program that will do it justice. They saved my son. They connected him on a, with him on a level that never could have happened in a traditional setting. Every person played a major role in his success. He wasn't a troubled kid, he was just lost. I am forever grateful to them for helping to find him again. I reached out to a number of parents of graduates and every single one of them wanted to write a testimonial. So, every single one, it was great. Graduate, really, really, really doing well. Incredibly gainfully employed, very happy, strong relationship and some of his words. Katahdin changed my outlook on schooling and life with their out-of-the-classroom learning and experiences. They helped me open my eyes and see the possibilities, not only for jobs, but hobbies that might interest me. I honestly think my success after I graduated was all thanks to the Katahdin school team. They pushed me to want more and work hard for the things that I wanted to accomplish. They are truly people I will never forget and could never thank enough. Their devotion got me back on track and onto bigger and greater things in life. All right, sorry, just need to compose myself a bit here. This person came from a pretty tough place and is in a very good place right now. I think a large part of that is us, a large part of that is that human being as well, but these are kind words and they mean a lot. Couple of things I'd like to touch on here. He mentions hobbies that might interest him. That's a big part of what we do. We want to try to expose our students to things that they can do to hopefully enjoy themselves in, you know, for the rest of their lives, not only when they're here with us in school. And these are hopefully healthy habits that are going to, you know, be lifelong things that, that they'll be able to take with them, share throughout their lives and the people in their lives with them. That's big. And then this person mentioned the team at Katahdin and I just want to focus on that for a minute because the staff that we have is amazing. We and they have been together for a very long time. They love what they do and they do it well. And I think this district is very lucky to have them as part of their team. I won't touch on too much of this that I had highlighted. Just go to, I'm going to jump down to the end here. This is, this is written from a young woman who's a new mom, happily married, a homeowner. She's a mental health person now, doing very, very well. I did so much with them that I never would have been able to do otherwise. They tell me that if I want something bad enough and I work hard enough, I can make it happen. They were truly some of the first people to really believe in me and see my potential and they reminded me of it every day, which is truly one of the biggest reasons I am still here. All right, I'm going to kind of move through this pretty quickly here. So what do, what are some of the out-of, the building sort of experiential things that we do and why do we do them? Lots of reasons. Number one being that these things are just as important as anything else to help with the personal growth of our students and their sense of self-efficacy. We have a whole bunch of partnerships and I'll talk about those here as we move through the slides. So this page shows a few of the things that we do. We offer sea kayaking to our students. Our staff is trained, certified, licensed and everything that they need to be to do these things. We have all the gear, et cetera. There's our resident therapy dog, Leila, who you all have met. We have Leila leading some students on a hike in the lower left-hand corner. We have students resting after trying to snowboard at Pleasant Mountain. Are you there? Very good, very good. Now just, yeah, it's just page to page. Thank you. You have to click on the arrow. Can you just double-click it? There we are, wonderful. Picture here, we go down every two weeks and volunteer at the primary school in Becca Cole's classroom. We've had a whole cycle of students go through there, different students most weeks and our students love it and her students love it. So, Dom, you've been part of that, I believe, right? Yep, really neat. You seem to be featured in a lot of these. Did you pay someone to put this together?
I did not.
So, we've done some partnerships with Altitude, the middle school alternative program. This is us helping them during their SAP boiling project, which I know you know about. We went over and took over between-class switches and what have you so that everything would keep, keep moving, which was great. Our students love that and we helped them out. We also do some peer mentor trips with their students and ours where we go out into the out-of-doors with Dr. Nadeau and some of our students on hiking trips with their students. So that's been fun. And we hope to do much more of that in the future. So that's been fun and we hope to do much more of that in the future. Farm-to-school project stuff. We had a incubator in the room and hatched a whole bunch of eggs this year and, you know, part of that projects, our students were learning about genetics, embryology, growth and development across different species, all sorts of cool things. The greatest thing about that was the amount of people that came from the high school to see the chicks when they were, when they were hatched. I hadn't even seen some of these people before, but the word got out and there they came and, you know, everyone wanted to hold the chicks, which was really neat. So what else do we do? We have a hoop house down at the community garden. Do, we're installing a new irrigation system right now in that, which should be great. All sorts of things that our students are learning and doing down there. We just harvested a bunch of fresh spinach, which we had in a big salad at a barbecue that we had last Friday. We hope to do the same this Friday. So that's wonderful. Students have been very lucky too. That's all right. Spend some time down at Swan Brook Stables. Brooke Harris, one of the district's social workers, boards her horse there and does some volunteer work. She's been able to bring our students down. We've had a bunch of students cycle through that as well and do therapeutic equine activities down there, which has been wonderful. We're, we're thankful that the Katahdin program has its own kitchen. We do a lot of cooking, a lot of culinary stuff with our students, teaching not only how to cook and everything associated with that, but provide meals for the kids and then we try to provide community meals to people as well when we can. Some of the outdoor stuff that we do and why we do it. So, you know, from the beginner level to, you know, pretty high-level stuff, we offer our students this challenge by choice. Students do not have to do any of these activities if they don't want to. If they do, we have the opportunities to give to them. So why do we do some of this stuff? Once again, self-efficacy is a big part of it. Cognitive functioning, problem-solving skills and just what doing some of these activities does to your stress level is, is a big reason why we do them. We've got ice climbing, we've got winter hiking, some more sea kayaking rods, teaching students how to set up tents before going on a backpacking trip. You know, once again, skiing and snowboarding at Pleasant Mountain, all sorts of other things. We've got mountain biking that we do offer for students and rock climbing and I could go on. I will not. We did an apple pie making contest or entered our, a number of our students made apple pies, entered the contest at Freiburg Fair and right on the end, closest to us, you can see that, yes, blue ribbon prize for best apple pie at the Freiburg Fair. A pretty impressive endeavor by one of our students, yes, very, very nice. We do some volunteer work at a couple of different places. Some's got trail management, Northeast Mountain Bike Association Trail Maintenance, we do that. Had a really cool activity where we did microplastic cleanup on, on some beaches and the lessons associated with that really opened the eyes of our students as to what significance of that problem. And some of the other things that we have done in terms of partnerships, et cetera, we, the two pictures with the red barn, those are at the Falmouth Historical Society. I'm a member of the board there. Did a whole bunch of stuff there. We're moving bricks in some of those pictures. We've done pruning and other maintenance stuff around the property. They are not nearly as supported as the Wyndham Historical Society. The middle picture on the bottom, that's us loading bags of wood pellets into this woman's house who we've done some work for. Elderly woman who's had a lot of surgeries, so we've, we've done some help there for her as well as other places. And then the upper left-hand corner is the sixteen-foot rowing dory that we've made in partnership with Sailing Ships Maine. They gave us a, a kit that we could build from scratch. It's a twenty-five-hundred-dollar kit and our students have literally built this from the ground up and soon it will be seaworthy and ready to be rowed in Casco Bay at some point in the near future. This is out on Macworth Island in partnership with the Maine Outdoor Learning Initiative, which is a brand-new facility they built out there. We were the first piece, people to use it and we've used it quite a bit. And anyway, we'll do lots more with Sailing Ships Maine. They're hoping to get us out on a small, probably two-night sailing trip in the fall. I think that's it, right? Okay. Be glad to answer any questions?
I'm blown away. I mean, I, I'm so impressed. I understand that this program's limited and it has its purpose. Thank you for your testimonial, that's really powerful. I think we've talked a lot of, as a board, about vocational opportunities and things and pulling that down into our programming. I know the principal of the Wyndham High School is working actively to expand offerings. So I just want to make a general comment that this is just terrific work and I would love for any of my kids to participate in this. Definitely appreciate and understand the struggles and some of these highlights are just some of the reason that it's great for students in your program to come because of the impact and transitioning the experience to the impact is so important in all student work, in my view. So I, I'm just so impressed. Thank you for, for going through that in detail. And then I would just ask, are there any resources that you would like to have just in general? We've talked about grants, we've looked at, we've just gone through our budget process, but just in general, if you could make a comment on anything that would be, you know, pie in the sky outside of some of the things you've talked to us about in the past?
I, I don't have any, honestly. I am extremely, and I'll speak on behalf of our team, I'm extremely just blown away and appreciative of the support that the board has shown the Katahdin program over the years. So we are very creative in our funding, self-funding, do a lot of grant-writing ourselves and we realize that we have quite a bit and, and with that, we're able to offer our students quite a bit. So I appreciate that question, but I think we're, we're good where we are and I, I reserve the right to change that answer, however. So I would like to say, does anyone else have anything?
I don't think so, go ahead.
Please come visit us if you would like. We would love to have visits both in the classroom and if you are interested in any of the things that we do outside of the classroom, we would love to have you. I'll note, we have eight graduates this year and four are going on to college, three are, are off to the world of work and one's going to the military. So we're very proud and excited for their next steps. Thanks, folks.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation from our Jobs For Main graduate specialists. We have Jen Dumont and Kenneth Tompkins. Come on up. Or Jen can start if that's how you guys want to work.
We'll be a team. We brought some students along too. Okay, well, I just, I am Jen Dumont, I am the JMG specialist at Wyndham High School. This is my eighth year and I'm happy to see many of you have come to visit my classroom, which I really appreciate, so thank you for that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about our program and the good stuff that we are doing in both our middle school and our high school. Yeah, so I am the JMG specialist at Wyndham for the past eight years, which I can't believe it's been eight years already, but it has been. I currently teach five full classes and work with nearly a hundred students in the program in an advisory and a workshop. Beyond my role as a JMG specialist, I'm the co-advisor of the Civil Rights Team, the Can We Project liaison, and I serve on several committees. One of the roles I enjoy the most, of course, is to be the advisor for our JMG Leadership Council, which focuses on community service initiatives, including a mentorship program that we, the students started this year with the middle school. We have an annual trip to the State House for firsthand lessons in government operations, personal agency and creating impact at the state level. And our JMG closing ceremonies where we celebrate our graduating seniors coming up on May twenty-first. From six to seven-thirty, you're all welcome to attend in our guac pod. So JMG is a statewide program. It's in ninety-one Maine high schools. It's designed to empower students who face barriers to success. Students who may be economically disadvantaged, belong to marginalized groups or have disabilities. These are students who too often fall through the cracks of a traditional high school model, but in JMG they find something different. They find a classroom that becomes a community, a space that becomes a home and a program that believes in who they are and who they can become. One of the key features of JMG is its structure. Classes are intentionally small, typically twelve to fourteen students, though I joke because mine always end up being bigger. I always take them in, I always take more kiddos in. But this allows me to build strong, lasting relationships with my students, many of whom stay with me year after year, from their freshman year until graduation. You'll speak to some of those kids, they'll speak to you tonight. That continuity creates a unique opportunity for mentorship and personal growth that most school programs simply don't have the capacity to offer. Our curriculum is creative, project-based and hands-on. It meets students where they are at and invites them into a journey of self-exploration. We focus on building real-world skills, communication, teamwork, leadership, financial literacy and career readiness. But more than that, we help students find their voice. We help them identify their passions, their strengths and their goals. And most importantly, we give them the tools to turn those goals into reality. Programs like JMG matter. They move the needle on graduation rates, student engagement and post-secondary success. Across Maine, JMG students graduate at a higher rate than their peers and many go on to college, training programs or directly into the workforce with confidence and purpose. When we invest in students who face adversity, we see incredible returns, not just in their academic performance, but in their self-esteem, their resilience and their hope for the future. Tonight you'll hear directly from a couple of my students. They'll share their stories in their own words, how JMG has helped them grow, overcome obstacles and find a clearer path forward. I believe their voices say much more than any data that I could ever share. In closing, I want to thank you for your continued support of JMG at Wyndham High School. This program works, it changes lives and with your help, we can ensure that every student who wants to can, despite the challenges they face, can have the opportunity to thrive. So thank you. And now Brooklyn Boucher, our career, our JMG Leadership Council President this year.
Good afternoon. My name is Brooklyn Boucher and I am a senior at Wyndham High School and I have been a part of the JMG program for the past seven years and this year I have the privilege to be the JMG Leadership Council President. I can confidently say that this program has changed my life and so many others. Many students who enter JMG feel like they're bound to fail, not because they lack potential, but because they don't see a clear future ahead, or at least not one that feels within reach. JMG helps students find that path. It provides real-world skills, mentorship and opportunities that make success feel possible. Around seventy percent of JMG students come from economically disadvantaged families. One-third are raised by single mothers and as of 2019, one hundred and nineteen JMG students had been in the foster care system. These numbers represent real students, students who are capable, hard-working and full of potential, but who often face barriers that make success harder to achieve. JMG doesn't just help students see a future, it helps them build one. Through civic engagement opportunities, we learn professionalism, leadership and advocacy. One example is the Can We Project, which teaches students how to navigate difficult conversations about real issues impacting our communities and how to create change. Last year I had the opportunity to take part in the New England Youth Identity Summit where we led a discussion about re-imaging public education and what school could look like if students had more input. These experiences have shaped who I am and have given me the tools to move forward with confidence. It has given me opportunities that have guided my next steps into a career that will be fulfilling and meaningful for me. JMG isn't just another class, it's a support system, a launchpad and a space where students can feel valued, discover their strengths and step into a brighter future. Thank you. And now Zosha is gonna speak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Zosha Lewind and I've been a part of Ms. Dumont's JMG class for the past three years and honestly, it's truly changed my life in ways that I could have never expected. When I first came to Wyndham High School as a freshman, I had no idea who I was or who I wanted to, or what I wanted to do with my future. I felt unsure of myself and the path ahead was unclear. But sophomore year, I stumbled into JMG and through the annual career research projects that we do, I began to explore different possibilities for my future. Everything from being a surgeon to a travel nurse to an esthetician and eventually a teacher. After a lot of self-discovery, I found my passion of working with children. Now I work at Little Log Cabin Montessori School where I've completed many hours of work experience in early childhood education. I even earned five hundred dollars through the Maine Career Exploration Badge and I've saved that money for college. Next year I'll be attending USM in the fall, continuing my JMG journey with Randy, who's the JMG College Success Specialist. Of course, I also plan to stay in touch with Ms. Dumont and keep her on speed dial for the rest of my life. What I love most about JMG is the bonds that I've built with classmates and my teacher. I've made lifelong friendships that I know I wouldn't have made without this class. JMG has a way of attracting students of all different kinds, but we all find commonality in our struggles and our strengths. And Ms. Dumont has created something really special, a classroom that feels safe, positive and even a little magical. It's a space where we've all learned more about ourselves, who we want to be, who we want around us and how we want to show up in the world. JMG has been my favorite class in high school because it's so different. We're not graded on perfection, but rather on effort and creativity. We get to express ourselves in ways that feel true to who we are. JMG also gives us opportunities like speaking to state representatives, leading story exchanges, participating in amazing projects like the Can We Project or speaking in front of the school board. I will always remember my time in JMG. It's shaped me, supported me and shown me who I want to be. In a perfect scenario, every student who wants to should have the opportunity to take JMG. Thank you so much.
My name is Kenneth Tompkins. I am the Wyndham Middle School JMG specialist. I've only been here for this school year, so it's been very exciting. I am excited to tell you a little bit about the JMG program at Wyndham Middle School, what we do, why it matters and how we're already having an impact on our students. First, a little bit about myself. Before joining JMG, I worked as a TV journalist for nearly twenty years. When I was laid off, I accepted a grant-funded role based at Gorham Middle School. That position gave me a chance to work closely with middle school students. I quickly realized just how special this age group is. They're such a crucial transitional stage of development, so many of them are looking for connection and community and someone to believe in them. When that grant ended, I immediately applied to be a JMG specialist because I had seen firsthand what this project does for students, what this program does for students and I knew, knew I needed to be a part of it. At Wyndham Middle School, JMG gives students a place to grow academically and personally through hands-on, project-based learning. We focus on communication, leadership, self-awareness and goal-setting. One project that I started this year was running concession for our home sports games with the help from my students. It's a small example of the help that we, how we help kids connect to their school, community and take initiative and build real-world skills. I hope to expand this initiative yet, next year for providing concessions at after-school programs. This work matters deeply to me. So many people go through life with a out-of-sense of direction, or worse, following a path they had no input in. JMG, in JMG, we support students in discovering who they are, what they care about and how they can shape that future under their own power. We help them understand their strengths and weaknesses and give them the tools to grow from both. Personally, I'm here for the little moments. We were working on a project called Everyday Things where we look at items that the students know and are very familiar with sports equipment table pencil and we look at all the direct and indirect jobs that are tied to that. And one student said to me, I didn't realize how much farming is connected to so many items. And he said it with genuine wonder and I was like, that's, that's the lesson, that's what we want you to get. Those little sparks of realization are the heart of JMG as our Wynd student pulls me aside to share some personal triumph or asks for help from a trusted adult. That trust, that's what makes this program special. This month, select students will be participating in our statewide eighth-grade adventure, a fun skill-building event where they'll be practicing interviewing with major Maine employers like BIW, LL Bean, Dead River and Maine Health. They will also connect with other students from across the state. Opportunities like this help our students see their potential on a bigger stage. The event takes place at Thomas College in Waterville, providing many of our students with their first experience on a college campus. That matters. Students who visit a college campus are significantly more likely to attend, to enroll in some kind of post-secondary study. These studies, some studies say that it is as high as thirty percent more likely. Events like this aren't just engaging, they plant real seeds for post-secondary success. While I teach at Wyndham Middle School, I'm already looking ahead to the future. When the new combined middle school opens in three years, students from Raymond, from the Raymond Community will finally have access to JMG programming at the middle school level. I look forward to serving the entire RSU fourteen community and extending this work and these opportunities to more students who can benefit from them. Also, as Jen mentioned, we just started doing a little bit of a mentorship between the two. high school and the middle school program. That was awesome. The high schoolers came down, they talked to these middle school students, and they were engaged the entire time. And that is, I don't know how well you guys know middle school students, that's difficult. So, it was very impressive, and after the students left, they kept that going, and there was more interest. They started asking me, "How do I get into JMG at the high school level?" And so, it's a very exciting time to be a part of this. So, thank you very much for your continued support in, of JMG in your district, and this program works. It meets students where they are and helps them become who they're meant to be. Thank you very much. And now, the inimitable Emily, an eighth-grade student in my program.
My apologies, I don't have that much of a speech planned, but my name is Emily, and I'm an eighth-guiter at Wyndham Middle School. Before I was introduced to JMG, it was rather hard for me to talk to new people and keep a conversation. But once I had joined, it introduced me to meeting new people and that working in a group could be fun and helpful. In JMG, the classroom you get to work in is very tight-knit, and everybody gets to know each other greatly throughout the year. JMG helped me improve my social and communication skills. Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this program, it really made a difference for me.
Do you have any questions for us or the students?
Jess?
First off, thank you. I was never really a hundred percent sure what happened when my kid said she was in JMG for like, two days, only because she had orchestra. But how do students take part in JMG? Is there a waiting list? Are teachers recommending them? How does that work?
Yes, I work really closely with our guidance. Thanks, thanks, Ken. I work very closely with our guidance and with our fellow teachers. I'm at the high school, I'm part of the Alternative Education Pathways Department. So, we, I work really closely with admin, and I do have a lot of students that are requested, like, that admin will come and say, "Let's try them in JMG with Jen," and sometimes it works out really, really, really well. So, that's why I was joking when I say I like my classes to be at twelve, but typically we're up to like sixteen or seventeen. Can you have it a little bit different at the middle school, where every kiddo, or a lot of kids?
A lot of kids do cycle through my class. Ideally, I will, as I'm moving forward, because I'm just establishing, but ideally, moving forward, I will actually recruit students. So, and they, they sign a commitment form to be there, so they commit to following along with the, the JMG program, and that kind of adds a little bit extra kick to it. It, it's, they get out of it what they put into it, it's very much one of those programs, and so it's, you want to have kids that want to be there.
Just to add to that, it is, it is an elective, so it's not a requirement. So, any kiddo comes in, it's, the expectation is that they will commit to the program. Particularly for me, if they are a senior, part of my requirement is I follow, which sounds so creepy, I am with them for a year after they graduate. So, we check in every month. For many of my students, it's more than once a month, to make sure that they're doing okay with whatever they go on to do, whether it be college, or a job, or, you know, some credential. They, I check in, I can help them, ideally, I can help them if they're facing any kind of struggles after they graduate from high school. Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, question followed by a comment. The question is, can every student that wants to participate, participate, or are there, is there a waitlist or limitations?
Yeah, so, our program focuses on kids who face some sort of barrier to success. So, that could be an economic barrier, and like, some, one of us said, at least seventy percent of my students have an economic barrier to success. It could be a learning disability. It, what? Yeah, the foster program. Marginalized populations of kiddos. Lots, what, like, recently, I'm seeing more and more anxiety, depression, you know, just barriers to being successful in the traditional classroom. A lot of those kiddos will find success in the JMG classroom, because it is so tight-knit and creative, and a lot less pressure than some of our academic classes. So, no, unfortunately, not every kiddo who wants to, I joke with Ken, the mentoring program worked. I have sixty-five freshmen who want to take JMG next year, and that would be my entire roster, so we're gonna have to do some figuring out. Ken and I are working on that. But typically, I teach three sections of eleven-twelve, and I teach two sections of freshmen and sophomore. We may have to look at shifting that, although that would be strange, but, but yeah, so, to answer your question, I typically have about sixty to seventy high school students a year.
And just real quick, at the middle school level, it's a little bit more, it's, it's part of their wellness plus, so, it's kind of like health or gym is one of those, and they, yeah, I have, I think I, a hundred and sixty-four kids a semester, and I do two, two sections for each grade, so six, seven, and eight.
My follow-on comment, I guess it's two, is one, I'd really actually enjoy coming to, to see your programs at some point, and we'll work through the process on that, if it's not too intrusive. The other thing, just an observation tonight, we've heard from four students now, and every one of them is a phenomenal public speaker, so just blown away by that, it's really great.
Marsha, you have something?
All right. I'm just curious, I mean, I know you answered his question, but are there students that would fall within the realm of the students that you would deal with that cannot get into the program? Are you maxed? Are you, is there a certain number that, where you max out and you can't take any more students, whether they would belong in the program?
Well, that's where it comes into, if I, if I have a classroom full of twelve students, and then guidance comes to me and says, "Jen, do you have room for one more?" And we look at the student, and they are a perfect fit, they meet the criteria, and they're, they want the class really bad, then I inevitably say yes. So, so many of my classes end up being sixteen or seventeen students, which, for those of you who've visited my classroom, it's not a big classroom. We have tables, there's kids in the corner, and on the floor, and behind my desk, and wherever we can put them, but if they want it, and I can fit them in the room physically, then, then they get the class. To answer your question, though, no. Like, there are hundreds of kids at Wyndham High School who I would love to see in the program, but there's only one of me there, so I can't facilitate all of them. But, does that answer your question?
Ah, yes, it does. And, and thank you, thank you both for the job that you do. I know it probably isn't easy, because every student is different, so, so they all have different needs and different requirements, and keep up the good work.
If I can just say a couple comments. First of all, thank you guys and students, outstanding. It was great to hear from all of you tonight, but I think it's important for the public to know that Jobs for Maine graduates has been around for a long time. If I remember correctly, it was created under Governor McKernan with the Maine Legislature, and it was part of the Jobs for America's Graduates Program, and it was Maine's version of it, and the legislature set aside money under Governor McKernan, and every single governor and every single legislature since has actually continued to support. Job for Maine Graduate is a separate nonprofit. As a district, we pay roughly the third of the salaries for Kenneth and for Jen, and actually, Carrie, who's back there as well, is partially funded under Melmac and JMG and the district as well. But we pay roughly a third of their salaries, and it's a partnership that has been well-developed over the years, and it's just been such a great addition to our district. But it's something we have to apply for as a district, it's not an automatic position, and the, the, the program itself, out of all of the Jobs for America's Graduates programs, actually, I think has had the highest high school graduation rate. And over time, as I think state funding has stayed pretty flat, the organization itself has done quite a bit of grant funding in order to be able to keep positions. And then also, for local districts, the amount that we've been asked to pay has not risen that much, I think, over the eight or nine years now that we've had the program. So, it's been, again, it's been a great, great addition, and just so excited, and just so glad to hear from students. I'm not sure if they're still doing the high school competition, I know that kind of disappeared for a while, but the public speaking portion, which I used to actually go and judge, you guys would be outstanding, all of you at that competition. It was one of my favorite parts.
Ken, how much of your work blends over into Raymond with respect to Jordan Small Middle School at this point, if at all? Or do we have, we don't have anybody else over there right now?
No, currently, it is just at Wyndham Middle School, which is why it's so nice that we're gonna have that combined school. And it will also be nice for my recruiting purposes with having, I believe, because the fifth grade is gonna be there, correct? So, with the fifth grade there, I'll be able to look at those students and see them coming into my sixth-grade classes and really pick them out. Right now, I don't have that connection that I would like, so.
Sure, and then I guess my other question might be for Chris, is just thinking about, Katada might be a little bit different, but thinking about this program, and as we work through BAR in the district, obviously, we're working through identifying students in the Alternative Pathways Departments. It seems to me that there could be some congruency around the BAR program and feeding students through as we bring that down into the middle school level and developing opportunities for JMG, especially at the middle school, but then thinking about just another opportunity through BAR to identify early and often for what the kiddos need, instead of, as the team talks about, instead of, Ryan said to us at his last presentation, I'd rather catch them early and identify what they need and have them be successful versus trying to catch up. It's not as...
And I hope the theme that the public is hearing tonight and the board is hearing tonight is that it's a goal of all the administrators and all the specialists who work with our students and our staff, to know our kids and to know them well, and to know what their needs are, and then there isn't one program or one pathway that works for every kid, but that we can, to the extent that budget can support, and we have facilities to support, that we can continue to run as many pathways, so that ultimately, we all have that, that goal of kids reaching the civic center. And then for me, it's once they leave the civic center with their diploma, that they have choices, as far as what their next step is gonna be, and it's not dictated that this is the pathway you're going in, that they have the skills that they need in order to head in a multitude of directions. And so, Jen does definitely track. I know Carrie also tracks our graduates. I know you're trying to hide there, but also tracks our graduates over time to make sure that, you know, kids are continuing to be successful and they're continuing to follow. I'm glad that you're gonna connect with Randy at USM, he's my camp neighbor, so I see him all summer, so I will let him know that you're coming and that he will be looking out for you.
Jess?
Just one more quick question, and this is probably for Jen. I can remember, a few years ago, we were invited to see the students do the Can We Project, and is that gonna happen again, and Can We come?
Well, I am the Can We Project liaison currently, and I've been working in it for my third year. Unfortunately, that is not a stifened position after your second year. So, this year, and these people, they have participated, I love the Can We Project, it is incredible what it does for students. We've all become story exchange facilitators. We would love to do a story exchange with you all, if you ever wanted to. They did it with the staff again today at the high school, we've done it, my students, I say they, my students did a story exchange with the staff for our PLGs today, and they did one previously. And it was the most positive teacher meeting, like, when people laughed, like, they actually enjoyed it. So, yes, I'm hopeful that I continue as the liaison for the Can We Project next year. I do have a lot of seniors who are graduating from that program, so I'm gonna work closely with John Holdridge, I'm actually meeting with him on the fifteenth, to talk about possibilities for next year. But as soon as I know anything set in stone, I know we have collaborations with Gorham, Yarmouth, Cape Elizabeth, really close connections I've made with other educators, so I'm hopeful it's going to continue in some capacity, I'm just not sure exactly what that looks like yet. But I will let everybody know when I know. Thank you for the question.
Joe?
Just something Chris said triggered, triggered a thought or follow-up comment in my mind, and I think as we, I love finance, as we think about budget and, and how we are using the resources from the public in our education system, I think programs like this, programs like Katada, we're gonna hear about BAR, you know, spoiler alert, it's the same story, show a, show a true and tangible return on investment, not, not only with academic performance, but creating spaces for students to be seen. The, the numbers speak for themselves, and it, I just, I think it's really important to highlight what this district is doing through different innovative programs like this one and others to create success, and it's really wonderful.
Further questions? I think we're all set, thank you so much. Okay, our last presentation this evening is from Lindsay Hansen, who is our BAR coordinator at the high school.
Hi, I've met most of you, Lindsay Hansen, reporting out from the BAR program at the high school. So, I'm kind of, hopefully, the cherry on top tonight, we'll see with our programming, but it's really great to hear from students, maybe next year I'll bring some of our BAR kids along for the ride. So, what I wanted to do tonight was to give you a little bit of information about our first successful full implementation of BAR for our ninth graders, give you a little bit of data, but then also give you a little bit of an insight into the, how we get these students, and what we're doing, and how we're implementing successful interventions for them, many of which were presented tonight. So, we've had kids move on to the Katada program, we've referred them to JMG classes, so it's all very, a good culminating event tonight. So, some of the accomplishments of this year, the first, on, the picture on the slide shows our commitment to graduation. So, all of our ninth-grade students, we welcomed them in with a barbecue, I think we might have seen this. So, it was a great, successful first lunch out on the lawn, we had the perfect weather, just to kind of welcome them all together and let them know that we're here to support them. So, they signed this banner, so we're gonna hold them to it, the class of 2028. So, some of our successes, we've discussed, all two-hundred-and-thirty-five students, we talked about every single kid by March first. I think at this point, we're over five-hundred student reviews, which I'll elaborate on what that looks like. So, we've talked about kids that are thriving, we've talked about kids that are struggling, all of them. Teachers in our meetings have written one-hundred-and-seventy positive notes home, so emails that go to the student and to the parent, handwritten postcards in the mail, or delivered to them during their homeroom and advisory programs. So, we do that on Fridays, and that's been really beneficial for both the staff and the students. We hope to get all of them by the end of the year. We have some of our numbers and our stats, we've decreased our number of students that are failing by nine and a half percent. This was after the first semester closed, and then we even had some grade changes that brought that number even a little bit higher, so these might be slightly different than what you've seen. We'll, I will present and send you data after the full year closeout for sure. We've also decreased student behavior incidents by ten-point-six percent, so these are kind of reportable behaviors, we've decreased those. And we've also increased our average daily attendance by point-six-four. That seems like a small number, based on the number of students and attend, days in attendance, that's over two thousand kids or days of better attendance. So, although that number looks small, it is pretty mighty. So, I think one theme from tonight is relationships. It is definitely the thing I'm the most thankful for in our district, but our students and our teachers, there's a lot of effort that goes into that. And BAR has kind of a two-part model. They have a new logo up there, and it has kind of two arches that come together. One of those is supposed to represent the data that we put into looking at student data, and the other arch is of relationships, and that goes together to kind of make that whole student and bring that together. So, we have quantitative data that we look at, we have qualitative data that teachers are very good at, and we also look at strength-based model, and we're looking at the whole student. So, just a little sneak peek, peek into what we do. One of the aspects of BAR, there are many, there are things that happen in the classroom, there are things that happen around a conference room table in a block team meeting that I'm gonna talk about. We have larger meetings with administrators and support staff, and connections to the community as well. So, today, what we're gonna, what I'm gonna talk to you about is a group of teachers that sit around a table every other day, so this would be a student science, math, social studies, and English teacher. We have an assistant principal there with us, and also a school counselor. We have an assistant principal there with us and also a school counselor. And we have very distinct roles in this meeting. Most people like these nice, efficient roles, but we have someone who is in charge of our data sheet where we're keeping track of our student data. We have a person who is in Infinite Campus, so our school, our student information system. They're the guru of looking at attendance and their schedule, all of the things that we need. We have a task tracker who keeps track of what we're doing and what we said we were going to do for the next meeting, so that teachers can reference that later after they fly out of there for their next class. We have an emailer. So if there are interventions that we put into place and we need to reach out to other staff members or email a parent, we have someone who's kind of on that duty to write on our behalf, and somebody that sets up a timer for our student reviews. And we try to do a student review in five minutes. Sometimes we're better than that. Sometimes it's more complicated. So what I wanted to share is, I mentioned that we use qualitative data. We certainly do. When we come in and there's something that pops up with a student, we address that right away. But we also pull a ton of data related to students and how they're doing with their academics, with their behavior, with trends on their attendance. Here's an example. I saw some grins, and then I realized my student names are, yes, Harry Potter and Hermione Granger, so couldn't help myself. So this is just an example of what I might pull for data for the week. So in-progress grades of students that are failing, so they're getting less than a 70, and kind of looking at what are those classes? How many are they failing? And then when we start our student review, we might have some, oh, this is what's happening because they've missed seven days of school. How can we get into what this intervention could look like to support the student? So this is just a in-progress grades, but we look at a variety of, I pull these, and then our team looks at a variety of this information. So I tried to take some screenshots across our data sheet. So this is what it looks like. Our teachers are all sitting around. We're going to talk about Harry today and set a five-minute timer, right? So we start with student strengths. He's funny. He's kind. He has a lot of prior knowledge. He's pretty artistic. He's a leader among peers, and he wants to do well. We sometimes get stuck on this, and the box gets really lengthy. So we start with the positives, and then we try to look at connections to school. So are they in clubs and sports? Do they dance? So it's not related to the school, but they're very busy. So we start with this to kind of put that whole student perspective, and teachers always are able to chime in on this. Then what we do is we start with the date, and we look at what their grades are in that live moment. And a teacher who's in Infinite Campus says, hey, he has a 66 in social studies, a 70 in English, and we go all the way across the board. I'll come back to the level in a second. Go for it. Yep, that's right. And then what we do is we start in on areas of concern. So we have the student, what are our major areas of concern after we've looked at grades? We've looked at attendance. We've looked at anything that's coming up in class. And so we list our concerns, failing multiple classes, and maybe his attendance is the problem, so we need to go back and look at what that is. And then we try to set a goal for that student, that we start with the goal and then we go to the intervention. And so for this kid, we might say, hey, he really needs to advocate for himself when he misses school. We want to teach him that he's going to come in and follow up with his teachers, and we want him to come in for our pride blocks, which is our awesome remediation block. And so we're going to have him signed up for social studies and for math to make sure that we get him back on track after missing some classes. And our intervention is, we might have a teacher that said, hey, you know, I have a good relationship with him. We have the favorite band. We're going to talk about it. Let me talk to him, and I will talk to them about the advocacy piece. And also to give him some positive praise when you see him, like, hey, it's so great. I'm glad that you're back in class, to try to foster that relationship so the student wants to come to school. So this is our five-minute kind of process. Our taskmaster will say, okay, Ms. Hall, you're having the conversation. Mr. Obi, you're signing him up for pride, for social studies, and we get these plans in place. The next time we meet as a team is two days later, and from our task lists, we say, hey, did you have the conversation? How did it go in pride? And they're like, hey, he came in. He got a lot of work done, and we give a little update. After we set our goal and our interventions in place, we level the students. Zero is thriving, like they're doing so great. One is, they might have some struggles failing a class. There are other things going on. Two is failing two or more classes. Interventions don't seem to have worked. Maybe he didn't come to that pride block, or there are other issues related to that. And level three is when the teacher team bumps that student up to a team that meets on Fridays called Community Connect, where all of our administrators, our school psychologists, social workers, and counselors, and myself are there. And this is where the help that the student needs is beyond the doors of the classroom. So they might need access to the things that we have available to us as the district level. So that's what our student review looks like. So that's, those are some of the ways. It's my job to bring forward different types of data to drive the conversation. It might be, I'm pulling all the kids that have perfect attendance. We're looking at zeros today, so bring forward the kids in your classes that are thriving, and let's see how we can connect them with extended learning opportunities, one of the things that we have here, or get them into the community to job shadow, something of interest. So giving back to those students also. So that's what we're doing in our student review meetings, and this is a way for us to really know these kids, and they feel very connected to Wyndham High School, which is great. So I'll just leave you with this little quote. This is a student who we have reviewed many times and who is finding her path and really having success. She said, "My bar teachers have supported me by being there for me, always pushing me to do my best. They're always willing to talk with me and listen if I need them. If it weren't for my bar teachers, I would feel very lost." I think she is not lost anymore, so that's great. One thing, I really appreciate the opportunity to come and share. One thing that we are doing, just as some news, and I'll send it your way, is we are wrapping up our bar program with each team going on a field trip, having a culminating activity. One is coming up next week. We're taking a group of kids to the sunflower farm in Creamery in Cumberland. And then we also have a collaboration with the Ferry Beach Ecology School, so the two other groups will be going there in June to just celebrate their success, kind of have some closure about the year before we send them on to sophomore year. That's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Love everything about this. The one thing that you said that's sticking out in my mind, and it's a question first, have you had the opportunity in the two years, almost three years now, right? Am I tracking that too, going into three? Coordinating with extended learning opportunity coordinator in the district, you alluded to it. I know there's been discussion in her update as well of pulling that down to grade nine students as much as possible. And then my comment is, one of the things that I think is difficult in a district such as ours is the demographic is quite vast, and I don't think that's unique to us, but we often focus our intervention on behavior. And maybe if I can say the negative pieces or bringing students more into their potential. And sometimes the gifted and talented piece isn't something we can focus on as much. And so the thing that I love about this that you've mentioned tonight is that we have the opportunity to take someone who maybe isn't academically gifted and talented in terms of maybe pure academics and the way that they may be developing in their life, but we can pull them for something they're particularly talented in, they want to do, and that could be VOK, that could be an ELO, that could just be something that they're dialed into early and often. And since we're doing it in that freshman year, I love the early touch to this. And again, I'll go back to the same message about middle school. There's some students that they have a family business, they're talented, young and early, and they know what they're going to do, so, yeah, I'll be quiet now, but just the question about the ELO piece and just encouraging, I think, the district to look at that coordination on alternative for earlier as well for those gifted kids.
Yeah, one thing in the second year of bar that I've really been able to do is to look at, do we have, you know, a really good menu of all of these opportunities for all of the types of kids? I have coordinated with the ELO coordinator, Lorraine, many times, and to your point about kids that are excited about VOK, and we have to say, ugh, you can't really do that yet, you know, but we said, hey, how about an ELO where you can go work with the fire department and figure out like what this looks like, start building relationships? And it's something that like gets them just chugging along so that they can make it because maybe school isn't what they really want to be doing. So we've had multiple freshmen that have completed an ELO that was kind of prompted by bar and that relationship, and we have a handful of students that we're introducing to her this year and saying, hey, this is a thing that you could do next year. You could get credit for it. And so she's setting up those meetings, and I have introduced them so that when they come in in the fall, they can get ready for that. So yeah, that is definitely one of those that we have picked, both for kids that are thriving and we want to kind of take their interest and move them up, but also kids that maybe aren't doing the best academically, or they don't like the academic setting typically, and this is an extended opportunity for them as well. So it's not just those kids that are doing really well academically. It's really for the interest base and to get them into those programs. So that's been one of the fun parts. I've obviously been in the district for a while, but having these relationships with colleagues to go and say, hey, I know you're really good at this, and we have the perfect kid for this. And everybody's been very open to that. And so I think me getting out into the school and into the community to bring those resources into the kids has really helped also the kids feel like, hey, I do like it here. This is my place, and I feel really supported. And in addition to that, I think teachers are leading with that positivity. Our meetings, starting on a positive note, I think in general, teachers that have been here for a long time are reinvigorated by like, hey, this is why I do this. I love these kids. Look at these strengths. So some of our underclassmen awards will be bar kids with, you know, the longest list of strengths or whatever it might be. So we're definitely making those connections with ELO programs and other good things that are already happening, and just bringing them all together and making sure that more kids have access to them.
Just a comment. I am amazed that by March 1st, you were able to have a review of each and every student in the class. I commend you and your colleagues who managed to accomplish that. That's really tremendous, and it's a huge, makes a huge difference in how our students are going to be successful. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. I might have set a little competition between our three teams. I'm like, hey, Team W, Team H is coming in. You better hurry up. So we got it all in, but yeah.
Sure.
So I just wanted to reinforce something that apparently I hadn't picked up on in previous presentations on bar. So I just wanted, if I didn't pick up on it very well, then maybe other people didn't either. And part of your presentation talking about how the bar is not just for kids that are having struggle. It's for everybody to identify their, not only their challenges they may have, but their talents, and how do we support those talents for their growth and development? So it, you know, for anybody that may be following along and thinking, wow, we have all these programs in place for kids that are having trouble, what are we doing for the gifted and talented? We've heard that from the public over the years, right? That we focus too much, or I shouldn't say too much, but we spend so much time and effort focusing on kids that are having trouble that we're ignoring the kids that are maybe gifted and talented or whatever. But your presentation really highlighted that it's for everybody, and it's a focus group of professionals to identify each individual child, and what can we do to support them to be the best they can be, right? So I just wanted to reinforce that because I hadn't picked up on that piece before. So you can tell Ryan that you did a better presentation than he has in the past.
I surely will.
And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So I just wanted to comment one thing, again, you had brought up that we hadn't heard in prior ones, because you went into a little bit more detail about just the structure of the meetings. I think that could be so beneficial in any meeting across an organization like ours, just because there's a lot to do in a day, and you don't have a lot of hours. We get a lot of kids, so that's great, and that probably speaks to how you were able to get to so many of the kids. I had a couple of questions. So you had mentioned one potential intervention could have been, you know, you sign up a student for a pride block. Now, would that be something scheduling-wise that would have taken, supplanted their workshop? Like, how does that fit into the schedule if they're going to be participating in a pride block based on the meeting?
So our, every morning starts in advisory, and then kids move to a 25 or 30-minute pride block in the morning, and that's, could be accessed by any teacher pulling any kid. So kids go to all the places that they need to go, and we keep track of them on Infinite Campus. But that would just be, if a teacher grabs that kid, then they're taken for the day. And somebody would look and say, ooh, you know, I can't get to Christina on Monday, but let me look and see if I can find her tomorrow. And the teacher pulls down, like, I can grab her on Tuesday. So in that meeting, those four core teachers oftentimes are like, okay, let's collaborate on, I need him on Monday because we've got a test coming up. And the math teacher will say, okay, go ahead and take him Monday. I can do it Tuesday. And right in that moment, they kind of like barter and trade for who gets the kid what day, and it's all taken care of right there in the best interest of the kid and what's coming down the pike for curriculum. And we also try to teach kids to advocate for this for themselves, to sign up and say, hey, Mr. Obi, I need you to put me in a pride for Wednesday. So through the course of the year, we teach them to try to do that for themselves, but we obviously know that there's lots going on with kids, and they might need that extra support, so we do it for them.
Okay. How is this different from Eagle Block? My understanding was that was the intervention at the beginning of the day was Eagle Block.
So Eagle Block is a class that kids are assigned to by their counselor. They usually come in and out quarter by quarter. That is a little extra support, and that's also something that we've done with students as an intervention. So say they maybe struggle with executive functioning, they've missed a lot of class, they're just getting behind, and we might say, the counselors in that meeting, we say, hey, they have a workshop, Block Two. There's also an Eagle Block during that period. Could we get them in there for the second quarter, get them back on track after these absences? Teach them kind of how to get those tasks written down and to get through the work. And so that might be an intervention that's a little beefier than signing them up for that pride block, but we also use it in that way. But it's a, it is a separate class in their schedule.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. And my last question, if possibly, you know, we talked about kids, level three students that might end up in the Community Connect meeting. You said they might need interventions more than a teacher could provide. Could you give some examples of what that might look like?
Sure. So it might be a counselor that's going to maybe reach out to home or make a connection with that student directly. It might be offering to, have social work for them to go talk to a social worker. It might be, you know, an outside resource, like just things related to like maybe be the influence counselor, things like that. So it basically, if it falls in the wheelhouse of a social worker, a school psychologist, an administrator or counselor, where we're really changing their schedule or doing something that's kind of above and beyond the classroom. And often, the benefit of that meeting and me being there is I can pass back down information, like, oh, this kid, you know, people are on it. You know, they, we have this kid, and things are taking place, so we don't need to worry about it. And that's helpful for teachers to know that things are, the kid continues to get support outside of their classroom.
Okay. That was all my questions. Anyone else?
I hate to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
So the grant for bar is gone after this year.
Yes.
Based on your experience over the last two years, and I'm putting you on the spot, how confident are you that we can continue to move bar forward at Wyndham High School without some of the resources that were provided by the grant?
So I am, I'm confident, we have some systems in place. I've been lucky enough to go to the national conference for two years and kind of get that professional development for myself. As you can see, I'm really into it. So I'm confident that we can move it forward next year. There are some components of that, specifically the professional development that comes with that, that I'm sure you know, any program that somebody tries to put forward is directly impacted by the buy-in of the people that are running that. The teachers in these meetings and the counselors and administrators are all on board and have great energy related to it. That professional development that bar provides brings this, kind of that relationship feel that the kids get from us, is given to the adults in those professional development opportunities. So I think as a maintenance, that's really an important aspect as teachers come in and go out to get that professional development and support. So, you know, I think we can, we can do it in this year and we'll be okay. I think going forward, it's an important aspect to growth and continued fidelity in a program that really, you know, there's a lot of working parts that have to kind of continue in order to make it this whole big picture, to not lose track of the kids. And so I think, I think next year will be fine, but I think the continued support from the community. And. the community and then from a relationship with bar with that professional development that really does help bring teachers into the fold is important. Yeah.
Go ahead.
So Chris, we included a bit of our funding at the 11th hour there, which was great for timing that we're able to do that. Does that remind me, catching us up through this year, or just for PD for those who hadn't had the chance to go for our middle school team? Can you just give us a top line on what that was?
So first of all, the funding that was promised for next year was pulled at the, not even 11th hour, it was 11:35 when we were trying to close out our budget. So I think for next year, not only the work at the high school, but we're also looking at how do we continue to expand at the middle level, because it is such an outstanding resource for our middle school teams to do as well, so looking to do. And then I think we'll have some time next year to regroup, so I think it will help us get through next year and some professional development opportunities. And I know bar is still working on their end to try to figure out how they can best support Maine, given the circumstances, because not only did Maine do a significant investment in bar, bar did a significant investment back in Maine. So I think we have enough to get through next year. I think as we approach budget next year, we need to take a look at how do we best support not only continued support at the high school, but a new combined middle school and resources that they will need there. I know Kayla and Michelle here have done a tremendous amount of work, and they've already discussing ways that we can expand that over to Wyndham Middle School. We may be coming forward with some budget asks next year.
I think we're all set, thank you so much.
Thanks, thank you for having me.
I'm just giving a minute for Christine to get back on stage if that's what she wanted to do. All right, item 13, renewal of administrator contracts, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to grant extended contract status for 2025 to 2027 to the following administrators. Elizabeth Peavy, Principal Raymond Elementary School. Michelle Bran, Principal Jordan Small Middle School. Kyle Rhodes, Principal Wyndham Primary School. Danielle Donini, Principal Manchester Elementary School. Ryan Karen, Principal Wyndham High School. Greg Appelstein, Principal Wyndham Middle School. Crystal Vargo Ward, Assistant Principal Manchester Elementary School. Phil Rossetti, Assistant Principal Wyndham High School. Vanessa Michau, Assistant Principal Wyndham High School. Diana Jordan, Assistant Principal Wyndham Primary School. And Amanda Ruth, Assistant Principal Wyndham Middle School.
Second.
Thank you, Grace. Board discussion. I just want to apologize to Vanessa Fornier, that I didn't catch that earlier. All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item.
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to grant second-year probationary contract status for 2025-2026 to the following administrator. Rich Mizerv, Head of School Kataden Program.
Second.
Board discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries. Next item, new appointments.
I move to approve the following appointment for the 2025-2026 school year. Kimberly Guptill, Special Education Site Coordinator at Wyndham Primary, MA Step 23, salary of $88,519. And Jennifer Fink, I assume that's pronounced that way, social worker at Wyndham Middle School, MA Step 23, $88,519 for the salary.
Second.
Was that Shar? No, it was Jess. Who said it? Thank you. Okay. Board discussion. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Next item, teachers' second-year probationary contract status.
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to grant second-year probationary status for the 2025-2026 school year to the following teachers, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize ahead of time. Stephanie Abrams, Physical Science Teacher, Wyndham High School. Matt Amade, Math Teacher, Wyndham High School. Caroline Bailey, Grade 7 Math/Science, Wyndham Middle School. Catherine Bernard, Physical Therapist, 3 Days a Week, Raymond Elementary and Manchester. Hannah Bernier, Grade 6 Math/Science Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Kiara Broadwell, School Counselor, Jordan Small Middle School. Molly Clements, Grade 8 Language Arts Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Matt Davis, Physical Science Teacher, Wyndham High School. Andrew Dennis, Math Teacher, Wyndham High School. Kendall Dolan, Occupational Therapist, Wyndham High School, no, Wyndham Middle School, Wyndham High School, and the Manchester School. Rich Drummond, Health Teacher, Jordan Small Middle School. Sean Durfee, Grade 7 Language Arts Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Dakota Duplessis, Resource Room Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Amanda Ertman, Grade 5 Teacher, Jordan Small Middle School. Madison Fallon, Grade 6 Language Arts Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Lindsay Galant, Special Education Teacher, Manchester Elementary. Catherine Giad, Art Teacher, 1 Day a Week, Wyndham Primary School. Priscilla Hefner, Grade 1 Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Lindsay Hansen, Bar Coordinator, Instructional Interventionist, Wyndham High School. Nora Johnson, ELA Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Megan Josephs, Special Education Pre-K Teacher, Raymond Elementary School. Adina King, English Teacher, Wyndham High School. Megan King, Grade 5 Teacher, Manchester Elementary. Benjamin Ledoux, Base Teacher, Wyndham High School. Colleen Lucy, Speech Teacher/Pathologist, Wyndham Primary School. Deb Malone, Special Education Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Greta Manley Hughes, Multilingual Teacher, District Wide. Donna McCardbell, English Teacher, Wyndham High School. Marina Melnick, ELL Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Allison Muir, Alternative Education Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Julia Parmakian, Math Teacher, Wyndham High School. Michaela Pelletier, Special Education Pre-K Teacher, Raymond Elementary. Alicia Piper, Teacher of the Death, Wyndham High School. Nathaniel Poole, English Teacher, Wyndham High School. Matthew Shadlow, Resource Room Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Laurie Swihard Brown, Social Worker, Wyndham Primary School. Sarah White, Social Worker, Wyndham High School. That's it.
Second.
Yeah, sorry, we're missing something for the agenda, but that's okay. I got Joe's, your second. Thank you, Marge. Board discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries.
I move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to grant continuing contract status for the 2025-2026 school year to the following teachers. Jennifer Bowlier, Industrial Tech Teacher, Jordan Middle School. Alexandria Belair, Special Education Teacher, Manchester School. Cameron Blood, Eagle Block Teacher, Wyndham High School. Lisa Burns, Grade 3 Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Valerie Carpenter, Library Media Specialist, Wyndham High School. Kristen Chansky, Standard-Based Teacher, Raymond Elementary School. Scott Connolly, Physical Education Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Jennifer Cunningham, School Counselor, Wyndham Middle School. Evanthia Dikopoulos, Grade 3 Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Courtney Dawson, English Teacher, Wyndham High School. Melissa Frye, Grade 6 Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Molly Glouss, School Counselor, Wyndham High School. Dennis Goyet, Grade 7 Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Eliza Halbig, Grade 1 Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Tess Hall, English Teacher, Wyndham High School. Brendan Hanlon, Social Studies Teacher, Wyndham High School. Leann Inman, Social Worker, Raymond Elementary School and Jordan Small Middle School. Jocelyn Lang, Math Teacher, Wyndham High School. Mandy Lavalli, Grade 8 Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Savannah Lemieux, Grade 3 Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Adam Anzo, Math Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Brendan McGinnis, Art Teacher, Raymond Elementary School and Wyndham Primary School. Kevin Mellett, Grade 3 Teacher, Raymond Elementary School. Carly Minor, Technology Instructional Leader, Wyndham High School. Michelle Paulus, Grade 3 Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Kaylee Petros, Instructional Leader, AP, Wyndham Primary School. Nicole Poirier, Grade 2 Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Simon Russell, Music/Chorus Teacher, Wyndham High School. Laura Sanborn, Special Education Teacher, Wyndham Middle School. Sarah Swenson, Kindergarten Teacher, Wyndham Primary School. Caleb Angeles, Standards-Based Teacher, Jordan Middle School. And Julie Young, Grade 5 Teacher, Manchester Elementary School.
Second.
Board discussion. All those in favor? Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Good night.